May we please have the roll call?
Uh, yes. Let's see, Commissioner Paul?
Here.
Commissioner Greavy?
Present.
Commissioner Warblin?
Here.
Commissioner Evans is absent. Commissioner Matthews?
Present.
Excuse me, Commissioner Cruzen is absent and Chairperson Childs.
Present. Commissioner Greavy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its best for all.
Now we'll review the information on providing public comments. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the commission and may be referred to staff. Comments will be accepted in person or via Zoom. Public comment instructions: To speak on an agenda item in person, please complete a speaker's card and give it to the secretary before the meeting or at the latest prior to the time for public comments on that item. When joining via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press 9 on your phone to request to speak. You will be called on by name and will have three minutes to speak. Now we'll have the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, there are not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Is there a second?
I do second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Now we'll have the approval of the minutes from our June 14th, 2023 meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes?
No, there are not.
Do I have the motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I do second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Uh, I'm abstaining because of not being here last time.
Okay. So noted. Now we're at the section of public comments.
I'm sorry, could if I could just pause for a second? Who made the motion to approve the minutes? Dawn, thank you, sorry, I went off voice and I put it on Matthews until you said that, so thank you.
For public comments, this is a time for the public to speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. I will now open the public comment period. Do I have any speaker cards for public comment?
Uh, we do not have any speaker cards for items off the agenda.
Okay. Do we have any speakers via Zoom?
I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
So I will now close the public comment period. Scheduled matters. The next item on the agenda is scheduled matters. For each item, there will be a presentation by city staff. For items that involve application requests, I will then ask the applicant to address the commission if they so desire. Then I will open the comment period via Zoom and in-house. I will close the comment period after all comments have been provided and after all our questions regarding the testimony during the comment period have been answered. After the comment period is closed, the commission will deliberate on the item and may have additional questions for staff. We cannot take additional testimony or questions from the public after the comment period is closed. So our first item will be the election of the Green Valley Three Apartments. Our first item is going to be a publication at the request of Nicholas Rule of the Spanos Corporation for a multifamily residential development involving 185 apartments on 5.78 acres of undeveloped land in the Green Valley Corporate Park at 4840 Business Center Drive, APN 0148-540-350. The project requires a recommendation to council for a general plan amendment and zone change. Our staff person is Jonathan Atkins and Jonathan will give us a pre-presentation.
Sorry, just getting set up here. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission. Tonight I will be presenting a collection of requests as part of the Green Valley Three Apartments project. These requests include a general plan amendment, zone change, development review, and environmental review. The site is 5.78 acres of undeveloped land at 4840 Business Center Drive within the Green Valley Corporate Park. This exhibit and the previous slide identify the location of the site within the context of the surrounding area. The site is a flag lot bounded by the Sienna Green Valley neighborhood to the north, two office buildings to the west, a residence inn by Marriott Hotel to the south, and a riparian corridor with a drainage ditch to the west. Green Valley Road is located on the other side of the riparian corridor. Access to the project site is shared by the Marriott Hotel and two office buildings from a driveway off Business Center Drive. There is one additional shared driveway to the east that provides another access point to Business Center Drive. The project involves a multifamily residential development with 185 apartments. The unit breakdown is as follows. There are 36 studio one bathroom units, 66 one bedroom one bath units, 77 two bedroom and two bathroom units, and six three bedroom and two bathroom units. The building would have three wings with an attached parking garage. The residential portion of this building would have a building area of 204,144 square feet that's spread across four stories, while the parking garage would have a building area of 54,845 square feet across two floors. The project would include 328 vehicle parking spaces and 14 bicycle parking spaces. The project proposes a variety of trees, shrubs, and ground covers as detailed in this landscape plan on the slide. The project provides private and common open space for residents of the project. The protected riparian corridor along the western edge of the site comprises a substantial amount of common open space. Recreational amenities include a pool spa with outdoor showers, picnic and barbecue areas, an outdoor kitchen, as well as an outdoor fireplace and fire table, lounging space, table tennis and cornhole game areas, an outdoor yoga area, a hammock lounge area, and lawn areas for passive play. A dog run is proposed in the western portion of the project site adjacent to the open space area along the drainage ditch slash riparian area. This slide provides a magnifying view of the various recreational amenities that are proposed for the pool and courtyard areas. And I'll pause for a minute just to let you take a closer look before moving on. The building would have a height of 49 feet at four stories. The parking garage would have a height of 18 feet at two stories. The building proposes stucco... Oops. Okay. Okay. The building proposes stucco stone CMU block with a decorative ground face, engineered wood, metal, glass, canopies, elevation recesses, and building wings to break up the expansive elevations. The northwest elevation would face the Sienna Green Valley neighborhood and is depicted for you. The west elevation, which will face the riparian corridor, is depicted in this slide. The southeast elevation, which will face the residence inn, is depicted in this slide. This slide provides illustrative views of the project at various locations. The site is currently zoned IBP or Industrial Business Park District and has a general plan land use designation of Business and Industrial Park. Areas with the existing designations typically include employment generating uses such as research and development, professional and administrative offices, light industry and business support establishments. Because the existing designations do not permit residential development, the applicant has requested a general plan amendment and zone change. The proposed zoning designation is RVH or Residential Very High Density District and general plan designation is Very High Density Residential as proposed. Areas with the proposed designations typically include multifamily residential developments with a density range of 22 to 32 units per growth developable acre. The North Cordelia Overlay District applies to the site and surrounding properties and would be unaffected by any zone change request. The Planning Commission would serve as an advisory body to the council for such actions. So in other words, you would be making a recommendation on the general plan amendment and zone change and the council would take final action on those particular requests. The city's comprehensive general plan update initiative is currently underway. The city is still contemplating a future land use scenario for the Cordelia area. Actions to approve the multifamily residential project are premature and inconsistent with the various options that have been considered by the council to date. None of the three land use alternatives anticipate residential uses for the Green Valley Corporate Park, which does include the project site. These three alternatives have included a one medical office slash research and development, two flexible office logistics and research and development, three industrial. Approval of the project may result in a residential project that could conflict with future land uses and a future land use scenario for this area and would essentially eliminate 5.78 acres of developable land that can contribute to the future land use scenario. And for those particular reasons, that is why staff is not in support of the project and will be recommending denial. Following a review of the project, staff determined that an environmental impact report, or EIR, was required to analyze potential significant impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. The city retained Barati Consulting LLC as well as LSA to analyze these potential environmental impacts and to prepare the EIR. The EIR identified air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, geology and soils, noise, and transportation as potentially significant impacts due to the project. However, all potentially significant impacts can be reduced to insignificant levels with mitigation measures. The city's environmental consultants are available by way of Zoom should there be any specific questions on the EIR. The city did receive a comment letter from Lazo Drury LLP, a law firm on behalf of an organization called the Laborers International Union of North America, Local Union 324. And this comment letter raised a collection of concerns on the EIR. Staff reviewed that letter and staff does not believe any of the issues cited in the letter are of concern. And that letter should have been provided to the Planning Commission and should be available on the dais here. And that letter should have been provided to the Planning Commission and should be available on the dais here. Because staff is recommending denial of the project, there is no obligation to recommend certification of the EIR. Consequently, the project would be exempt from the requirements pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section 15270A, which provides that projects that are disapproved or rejected by a public agency are statutorily exempt from environmental review. The resolution in your packet inadvertently provided the wrong statutory exemption citation. Staff has provided a revised resolution with the correct citation for the record. Staff recommends that the commission adopt Resolution Number PC 2023-07. This would deny development review DR 2021-013 and this would recommend City Council denial of General Plan GPA 2021-001 and Zone Change ZC 2021-003. Staff has prepared General Plan denial findings that are part of your packet. It should be noted, although they're not required by law, staff does recommend that they be adopted with the resolution for the record. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission. The applicant team is in attendance and available to answer any particular questions on the project. Thank you.
Before I have the questions addressed by the Planning Commission, I'd like to have Nicholas Rule from Spanos come into a presentation. And then after that, we'll open up for questions.
I would recommend that before the applicant speaks, we open the public hearing.
Oh, okay. I will now open the public hearing. Okay. Okay.
Good evening, Commission Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to present here tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Nicholas Rule. I'm with the Spanos Corporation. And for those of you who aren't. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Spanos Corporation, we were founded by Alex Spanos, my grandfather, in 1960 in his hometown of Stockton, where we're still currently headquartered. We're a privately held, family owned and operated company specializing in multifamily. We're active across the country and proven industry leader. We've constructed well over 100,000 luxury apartment residences to date. Jonathan did a pretty good job laying out obviously the location. So for the sake of being redundant, we'll stop really quickly on the site plan that we've laid out here. And I just want to point out, you know, this is our way of making the most.
Oh, thanks. This was our way of making, you know, the most efficient use out of a 5.7 acre site, fitting 185 units into, you know, a parcel that's tucked behind a hotel next to some office buildings. But it was also thoughtfully laid out away from the northern boundary of the site where we have a few neighbors. We know that there are about five or six homes just across the sound wall that's right there. So we set the building back away from that not to, you know, obstruct any of their views. And that's where we placed our two-story parking deck, which is only about 16 feet tall. The office building next door is about 37 for reference. So it's also a pretty unique design with a really nice, very large clubhouse in the middle. So when we talk about the architecture a little bit, a couple of things I'd like to highlight. You know, it's four stories, it's elevator served, there's a variety of different parking. But one of the things that we're most excited and proud of is that it's a very green energy design. So it's going to be NGBS Gold certified. So the National Green Building Standard is one of the most sophisticated, if not the most green energy certification that you can have across the country. And so we're going to be, you know, the highest rated certification that they offer. Everything about the building is energy efficient. It's going to be all electric. There's going to be a lot of electric vehicle charging throughout the parking areas and there's going to be a ton of photovoltaic solar panels on the roof as well. Another thing I'd highlight too is, I mentioned earlier, our clubhouse design was in the center of this, the center wing of the building. So we recently constructed Nova Apartments right down the street. It services 281 units. Our clubhouse there, which I think maybe some of you have seen, is about 9,000 square feet with a lot of amenities. This is 17,000 square feet, so it's almost double in size and it has pretty much every amenity you could possibly think of or offered to future tenants. Jonathan shared a good deal of some of these renderings, so I'll skip through these. This is, you know, pool area and spa. Our other courtyard here with another cabana structure, barbecues, fire pit. I'm going to stop here and I just want to highlight kind of what the interior of our units tend to look like. Very luxurious, you're going to have quartz countertops, you're going to have vinyl plank flooring, stainless steel appliances. Every unit's going to have a private patio or balcony. Every unit's going to have a walk-in closet. Every unit's going to have a full-size washer and dryer as well. And these are a few examples of some of the indoor amenities that we've done. You have your typical, your great room, a game room that has pool and shuffleboard. You have a movie theater. You have a sports simulator there at the bottom right, all of which you can expect to see at Green Valley Three. We have pet washing stations, bike cafes, 24-hour fitness center. We have cyber cafe. We're going to have a wine tasting room. And these are a few of the outdoor amenities as well. A pool cabana, fire pit, and another rooftop deck and lounge. So moving on from kind of the design and the amenities of the project, I know there's a couple of hot topics that we often touch on, especially in the Green Valley area, and one of which is the concern of school capacity. So we've been fortunate enough to, you know, develop two of the multifamily projects down the street, Verdant and Nova. And those projects, so we've been able to collect some tenant data from those projects. And so the graph you'll see at the top right shows Verdant with 286 units. They have 15 three-bedroom units, 118 two-bedroom units, and as a total has generated or currently has 24 school-aged children living at the project. That's ages K through 12. So it's about an 8% student generation factor. Nova, on the other hand, 281 units. There's no three bedrooms, there's 101 two bedrooms, and they've generated about 17 school-aged children, so about a 6% generation factor. So if you combine those or you average those factors for Green Valley Three, you could expect for 185 units roughly 13 school-aged children, K through 12. We have 55% of the units at Green Valley Three are studios and one bedrooms, and we're only offering six three bedrooms. The rest would be a variety of two bedrooms. Throughout the years, we've had a number of, you know, conversations with the school district, with the city. We've taken a very close look at all the numbers that the school district has published for each school, especially Nelda Monday, which is right around the corner. And there is certainly capacity remaining within the school district. And not to mention, we're going to be paying a $1.2 million school impact fee to the school district to help them mitigate and manage some of that, some of that growth. Another hot topic, as we all know, is traffic. So in addition to the vehicle miles traveled analysis that we did in the EIR, we performed another, a number of other studies. The first of which was an LOS study, or a Level of Service study, that looked at seven intersections surrounding the job site. Those are the red dots that you see right there on the right side. Throughout that study, our 185-unit project created no significant impact or any impact whatsoever to those intersections and their service levels. The graph that you see at the top left, I think, is really impactful and something I'd like to highlight here. So this is comparing our 185-unit multifamily project to what was originally entitled to go here, which was 200 to 250,000 square feet of office space and the trips that would be generated from our project versus a fully occupied office project that was intended to go here. And it's about three times more daily trips, almost 2,000 more daily trips with the office use. 310 more trips during the AM peak hour, 290 more trips with the PM peak hour. The last thing that we did was we did a travel time assessment. And so our traffic engineers from Farron Pierce, they did actual GPS timed runs. Because we know we hear a lot from folks about, you know, it takes a long time to get to the freeway in the morning. That intersection at Green Valley Road and Business Center Drive is a tough one. So our traffic engineers actually got in their car and they actually drove from a couple of different locations in the neighborhood to IAD East and West on Green Valley Road. And they did these runs about 20 to 25 times for each location. They did them all between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. And they did them over the span of three to four working days, when everyone's going to school and everyone's going to work. And so I'll quickly, kind of, I have a chart at the end detailing these. But the first route is from the East Ridge Drive entry gate to IAD West or IAD East. Sorry, IAD West. The next one is East Ridge Drive to IAD East, right down Green Valley Road and to the freeway on-ramp. The next one is Bridal Ridge Drive Gate to IAD West. And then the next one, Bridal Ridge to IAD East. And so the graph over here at the top right, when you see 2023 travel time, all of the averages are, you know, around two and three minutes from East Ridge and around four and less than five minutes from Bridal Ridge Drive. And you can also compare those because we did this four years ago when we were proposing Nova Apartments. And all of the averages from that time from four years ago are down 20 to 45 seconds each, which I think is, you know, kind of demonstrates the COVID effect. Less people going to work every day, more people working from home, fewer folks on the roads in the morning. And the last thing I'll highlight is the graph that we have on the bottom right, which was from our evacuation analysis that we did as part of the EIR. And what this shows is all of the current and proposed residential projects in the greater Green Valley area and that our Green Valley Three Apartments Project at 185 units adds 3% to the road capacity to the system. So pretty inconsequential on the whole. And lastly, Spanos is to pay roughly $1 million in traffic impact fees to the city to help them mitigate some of that growth and fund future projects. So another topic that I really want to touch on, I think is really important here, is future residents or the demographics of our renter base, who you can expect to be living, you know, at Green Valley Three. And I want to start by highlighting a study, that graph at the top right that you see. This was done by the Economic Development Corporation of Solano. It's ran by Chris Rico, who you all received a letter of recommendation from for this project, as well as Sean Quinn, who's the former city manager of Fairfield. And what this graph shows is that between 2010 and 2021, Solano County lost over 6% of its workers between the ages of 19 and 34. And it just demonstrates that millennials, younger professionals, are moving away from Solano, from Fairfield, in large part because of a lack of available housing options, whether it's something that they can afford or whether it's just something that appeals to them. And that's exactly what our apartments do, is we draw this exact demographic. Nova Apartments, this says 92%, we're closer to 95 right now. Our average tenant age is 36. And I'll also add, last year when we completed the project, we were leasing up during the fall of last year. And if you guys remember, inflation was at record highs. The economy was going downhill pretty quickly. And new household formation, something that we use a lot in real estate to gauge, you know, future growth, was at an all-time low over the last 10 to 12 years. And at Nova, we were leasing up 10 units a week during that time. So it just demonstrates that the demand is there. They just don't have enough housing options in the area. And, you know, some might suggest, one of the reasons that folks are leaving in this demographic is because there is a lack of available jobs or local employment. And the next slide I have, I would say paints a different picture. So this is a snapshot of some of the local employers in the very immediate area to the job site, to the project site. Kiowit Partnership Health, Fairfield School District, Jelly Belly, North Bay Health, all with 10, 20, 30 or more open jobs. These are all not counting, you know, part-time or these are all high-wage jobs that younger professionals are needed for. And it just demonstrates employers are in need of more diverse housing options for their employees and this project's going to do exactly that. It's going to help continue to fill a major workforce housing void. And more equally important, as new residents come, retail, office, and businesses will follow. I know there's been a lot of talk about attracting new big employers to the area, especially through the general plan update hearings. And that's obviously extremely important, but you're not going to be able to do it if they see that the local companies that are already here don't have a local talent base to hire from. And I just want to read a quick snippet from that recommendation letter from the Solano Economic Development Corp. Because I think it just, it kind of summarizes that argument really well. It says, "If we were to attract the kind of high-value employers that create high-wage jobs, it's crucial that we continue to diversify our housing stock. We are particularly lacking the kind of market rate multifamily developments that young professionals are looking for, and we are losing that demographic in droves because we aren't building for them. You can look down the road to the success of the Spanos Nova Project to see that demand is there." A quick, a couple of other quick community economic benefits that I just want to highlight. Our project's going to create nearly $9 million in impact fee revenue to the city and county, including $2.7 million in AB1600 fees. It's going to generate over $1 million in annual property taxes. And we'll also be joining three different community facilities districts, or CFDs, that go to fund things like maintenance for streetlights and landscaping, general infrastructure improvements, public safety and park maintenance. And those assessments are roughly 200, an additional $200,000 a year that the city will receive in perpetuity. And then lastly, at Nova Apartments, we were also able to collect some testimonials from folks that are living there. You know, we went and just wanted to interact with folks, ask them what their experience has been like, would they support another similar project, you know, in the immediate area? And here's some of the feedback that we wanted to highlight. A couple of these are from, Airman from the Travis Air Force Base. One from just a really enthusiastic tenant and another from a registered nurse who wanted to remain anonymous, but she and her husband are both RNs, one of which commutes to Napa for work. But we're also very excited about their experience and what Nova has to offer. And similarly, Green Valley Three. So that's the end of my presentation. I just wanted to end with just one closing, a couple of closing thoughts here. Going back to city staff's recommendation for denial of the project. You know, we've worked hand in hand very closely with city staff for about two years now on the design of the project and on the environmental review and study. And I think it's pretty clear, there's really no flaws in the design or in the merits of the project or in the environmental issues or environmental study of the project. It's merely a timing issue with what's going on with the general plan update. And it's believed, as Jonathan mentioned, they haven't gotten significant enough feedback or a vision from city council as to what the future growth of this area is going to look like. And those alternative uses in those, you know, three land use plans don't necessarily include housing. While, you know, the city council hasn't adopted or accepted any of those yet, I just want to highlight and look at or ask you to look at this project in its current context and its surrounding area. It's 5.7 acres tucked behind a hotel and next to mostly vacant office buildings. It's originally zoned industrial business park, which typically lends to office or light industrial. The new uses that are being proposed in those very preliminary, not-yet-adopted land use plans that Jonathan mentioned are mostly flex office or some sort of medical office. I think we can all agree that the office market is struggling mightily. The office buildings right next door are more than half-empty. And I think it's been approved and entitled for office for the last 20 years. And there's a reason that those buildings haven't been developed. And then industrial business park is also light industrial and I think we can. And then industrial business park is also light industrial, and I think we can all agree, and I know council has voiced in some recent hearings, that we don't want to see any more warehouses or trucks in this area. So I just ask, if not our project, if not one hundred and eighty-five really well-designed luxury apartment units, then, then what? And the last thing I'll add is, I've been able to meet with four of the seven council members in the last couple of weeks. I intend to meet with the remaining three, you know, in the coming weeks. But to them, to all of them, I posed the exact same question. I said, "Is there a scenario for the future growth and your future vision of this area that specifically excludes any or all type of housing?" And they all answered emphatically, "Absolutely not. It will include some type of density, high-density housing." So with that, thank you guys for your time. As Jonathan mentioned, we have our entire team here, architect, landscape architect, civil, traffic engineer, environmental, so we welcome any and all questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicholas, for that very thorough presentation. Now I'm going to ask my planning commissioners, do you guys have any feedback or questions at this time?
I would like to mention for the record that I was one of the commissioners that met with the applicant.
And likewise, I would like to disclose that I met with Mr. Rule and his team and did a tour of the Nova apartment complex. I do have a question for Jonathan. As staff developed their recommendation, was a consideration of the current state of the office market factored into that analysis?
It was, but also staff understands that, you know, future land use scenario may, may not involve office uses, but may involve other types of non-residential development. So we found that this project is somewhat premature because we don't, we don't have that land use scenario. So this could, approval of this project may result in development that draws a conflict with future, future land uses in the area. So we, that's where we came to our recommendation for denial.
So just a follow-up on that, and you mentioned that in your presentation, and an excellent presentation it was. Given its specific location and the fact that there's development on either side of it, help us understand what you're envisioning as a potential conflict?
It's not a conflict between, necessarily between the uses. It's essentially, if we, for Green Valley Corporate Park, are envisioning non-residential land uses that contribute to that, that future vision, eliminating a nearly six-acre project site would remove a developable land that can contribute to that, that vision. So I'm not necessarily saying there's like conflict between residential and half-empty office building or hotel. More so, you're just, you're eliminating the potentiality for land to be developed that can contribute to the future land use scenario. And that future land use scenario may involve residential, but to date it hasn't, and that's why we recommended denial.
Though this is the same development project, you know, the same land area as Nova.
Correct.
And that city council approved. So why, I, I would like to just understand more staff's view on why they're recommending against it. I've read through your report, and I understand those points, but I'm struggling with getting the sense of, or an understanding of how having that developed in a class A apartment complex would pose a conflict for other uses. Can you elaborate on that?
If I may, I have, I've got, Jonathan, if you could pull a slide that shows the land use alternatives, for the general plan, that is, excuse me. Thank you. And it sounds like Dave wants to add a little bit here, too.
Yeah, why don't I add a little bit? Dave Feinstein interim community development director and also part of the team overseeing the update to the general plan. So, want to be clear, we're not necessarily saying that housing is inconsistent with, with the potential acceptable range of uses for this site. The commission may feel that it is, in which case you're certainly welcome to express that in weighing whether or not you are supportive or not supportive of this project. But really, it really comes down to, as the city council is looking at the range of options for this site, they're looking, right now, you know, what's been presented through these three alternatives continues to see this as an employment center, not, not, not extending the housing that's already been built and expanding upon that, but to rather expand this area as an employment center. So those are the alternatives at play that have been published. Now, last month, the city council had a study session about land use in Cordelia, and at that point, staff did highlight that there were a range of requests for housing development in Cordelia, including on this site. We were, you know, we were thinking it's possible that council could tell us at that point, here's what our vision is and we would like to see housing, or no, we don't want to see housing. But they, they didn't complete that discussion, and so it's still on the table with the city council. And so really, it's more an issue of, for the whole vision for this park, it's still being weighed at the city council level. And to come back and make a specific decision tonight to say, nope, this site is definitely residential, really sort of closes off that larger discussion at the city council level. Or it doesn't necessarily close it off, because all you're doing is making a recommendation to them, and certainly you can, you can do that. But because it's already, it's elevated already to the city council, it's in the city council's lap, staff felt that the city council should be allowed to finalize what their vision is for this area. And then if it includes housing, we come back and we look at this proposal. But again, you may feel differently, and you may feel that this is appropriate and that you would recommend to city council that, that they do include housing for this site. So really, that's, that's it. It's mostly that it's in the council's lap right now to weigh what that vision is, and we just don't know where they're going, where they're going to end up yet, so.
And I'd like to come behind Dave and say this. As we look at, we're going through our general plan amendments and updates and all of our zoning stuff, do we want to be in a position where we're continuing to take one-offs? Or do we want to wait till we have our broader vision on how we're going to look for the future? Because if we start taking one-offs now, will we continue to take one-offs? Or will we come up with the general plan, get that synced, have the city council vision, and then move forward?
Yeah, and so I think these are issues for the council after the public hearing to, or for the planning commission to, to discuss.
I have a question. So is the city council waiting until after the general plan is solidified, or are they going to take this discussion up sooner than that?
No, we expect that they're, they're taking it up sooner. So, you know, we'll have another study session with them to provide some more information and hopefully at that point, get their direction. We're hoping that that's in, in September, at the, the next scheduled study session for them. Hasn't officially been scheduled yet, but, you know, ideally in September, we, we get that direction, but there's, there's no guarantee. I mean, it could take, could take quite a while. And the applicant has made clear to us that they're, they're looking for a decision. So they've asked for this to, to come ahead of that. And like I say, you know, the planning commission can certainly weigh whether you feel it's, it's appropriate for the, for the long-term of this area, or if you'd rather it wait for the council to render and lay out their vision.
Do we have any more questions from commission and staff or the applicant?
Not, not really a question, just to notate that I, I did meet with Mr. Rule over at the, the other two sites, Nova. We really didn't discuss Green Valley Three, but I was there.
Are there any more staff, are there any more questions for staff or the applicant?
This is not a question, but just an ongoing plea for looking at the synchronization of those light signals. I know our esteemed traffic engineer has assured us that they're working, but as a user, driving up and down that every day, I still have questions about how those lights are working, not related to this project specifically, but it definitely, despite the, the traffic report in this package, will have an added impact there, so.
Actually, I guess I do have a question for, for Nick. When was the traffic report created? Was that during COVID or is it more recent?
It was much more recent. It was over the last year, so post-COVID, twenty-twenty-two and early twenty-three.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I have a question for our applicant as well. Thank you for the report, it was stellar. The Nova project was created in what year?
We finished construction last year. We started leasing up about August, September.
Okay, the Nova project and then Verdant, and both of them are at ninety-something percent capacity?
Yes.
Okay, so neither of them are at full capacity just yet?
No, ninety-five is usually considered pretty close to full, because you're always going to leave a couple of units vacant for showing potential tenants. So I'd say the max you're ever really going to see is like six, ninety-six, maybe ninety-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, I had a couple of questions also. When you talked about that student generation factor, those numbers don't mean anything to me. I mean, so what's the ideal number? What's the sweet spot?
Well, I guess for me, the sweet spot would be as few as possible, because, you know, we, we get hit with the complaints that the schools are at capacity. I think it's more so just to, to show, I, I don't necessarily, from a school district perspective, have a way of explaining this is too high or this is too low. To me, it feels like twenty-four students, K through twelve, that's ages five to eighteen at Verdant, out of two-hundred-and-eighty-six units is a pretty low generation factor. And that's really all I was implying. And then seventeen out of two-hundred-and-eighty-one units, that's six percent generation factor for Nova. Again, I just was implying that that's, that's pretty low. And those are, again, that's K through twelve, right? So a pretty, pretty low number when we're talking, you know, school impact.
And I guess my final question was, you said that you would pay one-point-two million to kind of help with that impact. How did you come to that number?
It's required by state law. And each school district comes up with a report that they have to submit, I believe, to the state, and they have a rate that you have to pay per square footage of your project. And so that's based on Fairfield, Sisoun Unified School District's rate per square footage, that we calculated that. You bet.
I, I do have a question, Nick. If your development plan is approved, and I heard you saying there's going to be three-hundred-and-thirty-two parking spaces overall, and if there's a hundred percent occupancy, unless suppose that two cars per household, it's going to be three-hundred-and-seventy cars and plus, if there are more than two cars per, per occupancy, let's say three cars, there's going to be five-hundred-and-fifty cars. So we have only three-hundred-and-thirty-two spaces. So how are we going to deal with that crowding of the cars?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great question. We do not, because of the number of studios and one-bedroom units that we're offering, so fifty-five percent of those units are studios and ones, we don't see a ratio anywhere near to per unit. Nova, I think our total parking is about one-point-nine, and we have a, you know, a lot of open spaces at ninety-five percent occupancy. And it's, it's a code that we're following based on City of Fairfield standards. So we can sometimes go above and beyond that. I think we're, you know, a handful of parking spaces above what the code requires, but we're pretty comfortable with that number. And we realize the impact, we, we've been in situations before over the years where we've been underparked. That's not something that we desire to do, so it's really based on all of our experience and the demand that we know that we're going to draw, car-wise. Hopefully that answers, that answers your question. I'm confident that it'll be sufficient.
I also wanted to state for the record that this project does meet the development standards for, for parking.
Hello, one more. We said no more questions, but we do have more questions. Thank you for, Jonathan, for your presentation, for your presentation as well. And you may not be able to answer this, you know, because it's a business strategy question, but what is your proposal if this resolution is adopted, meaning you won't be able to build, and city council, it sounds like, may not have this on the table until the end of this year, maybe going into fiscal twenty-twenty-five, who knows? Then what's your thoughts? Will, will this be something where you could pause and come back to city council? What does that look like? And I understand, again, if you're unable to answer that.
No, I mean, my, my gut would tell me that if, if the commission chooses to adopt the resolution and not approve or recommend approval of the project, we would certainly have to weigh our options. But I'm confident enough in, you know, as you could tell in my presentation and in the merits of the project, that I'm confident enough to take it to city council and, and ask them to essentially override and approve the resolution. So that's probably what my gut would tell me, unless, you know, it may, maybe made sense to wait a couple extra months. But this kind of goes to the point that Commissioner Childs made as well, as far as one-offs. You know, we've had that conversation with, with the city. And our thought process, and the reason why we're bringing this now, you know, we've, we've been working on this for two long years on the design. If you all remember, we actually originally brought a much denser project that met a lot of opposition. It was about two-hundred-and-sixty-eight units with a central parking garage and units wrapped around it. We heard in the, we were trying to just get a study approved for it, right? And the, the commission denied it, the council approved it, and then even though the council approved it, we went back to the drawing board, we heard everybody loud and clear, we understood the concerns, and so that's when we downsized it to one-hundred-and-eighty-five units. But the point being, we've been at this for, for a pretty long time, and hence why, you know, we felt the project stood on its merits despite the unfortunate timing with the general plan update. But mainly, the city council's made it very clear, they're in no rush, they want to take their time and they want to get this right, and rightfully so. It's obviously a very important thing for the future of the city. So my point is, this could take at least another year, very easily. We've seen it take many more across all the other cities that we've worked with. And so that doesn't change the need for housing in the area. And, and so there are very few already zoned housing locations throughout the city of Fairfield. And so it, to me, it doesn't make sense to, I guess, deny all of those throughout that time. And, and why I felt it made sense to, you know, to bring it to the commission now. So hopefully that addresses your concern and also answered yours. You bet.
I'd like to clarify it, just a few things for the record. So the city council on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, held a, what was called a initiation hearing for a plan development. So the previous project that the applicant brought forward exceeded the density, the maximum density for the residential very high-density district. Because of that, the applicant elected to proceed with the plan development, which required an initiation hearing. So that plan development originally went before the planning commission, and as noted in your packet, the planning commission did not support the plan development moving forward. The city council did, in a seven-zero vote, allow the plan development to move forward for, for study, and it would still go through the process. So it wasn't approval of the project, it was just allowing that, that plan development zoning to move forward. And I did also want to note, not to dispute the need for housing, because there's a housing need, but there are several- but there are several zoning districts within Fairfield that do allow housing by right. Not to discount the need for housing, but the collection of zoning districts allow it outright.
Thanks for that clarification, Jonathan. Anybody else from the commission?
I have a question for Jonathan. Actually, an observation too. A few days ago, I was reading an article online while there's decline in commercial and retail office spaces since twenty-twenty. And it's because of the remote work or work from home. And moreover, the consumers shift from from shopping in the malls to online. And Governor Newsom, he passed two, he signed two bills, SB zero-six and AB two-zero-one-one in September twenty-twenty-two, to streamline commercial conversions into residential buildings. So how do you take that in in the present case?
How do I take the fact that the state is prioritizing converting commercial land to residential? Is that your question?
Yes.
So I just want to make it very clear that staff is supportive of housing and staff understands that office is not as viable as, you know, years past or decades past. The reason for the recommendation, as noted in the presentation and in the packet, is we have a general plan update that's underway. And there are uses that are being considered. And there is a future land use scenario that may may not involve housing. We also aren't expecting it to involve office, per se, but there may be non-residential uses that contribute to the local economy that also don't involve offices.
All right, thank you.
Jonathan, you mentioned in the package here, but just for the benefit of the public and everyone, can you briefly walk through the RENA implications and give a, you know, a one-minute overview of what that impact is as it relates to the city?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Just give me one moment to pull up some numbers here. So the city adopted a housing element, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-thirty-one housing element. And that was earlier this year in February. And as part of that housing element, there's what's called a regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, which identifies that the city must accommodate a certain number of residential units. For the city of Fairfield, from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-one, that number was, is three-thousand-and-sixty-nine housing units. The, just to elaborate a little further, the, as part of that housing element, the, there is a housing sites inventory that identifies land sufficiently zoned to accommodate residential in the RENA numbers. It also identifies sites that would be rezoned to allow for residential. And although this, you know, project would, you know, if approved, would add one-hundred-and-eighty-five residential units, the housing sites inventory actually doesn't identify this site. And it does identify other sites in in the vicinity, including the NOVA development, if I'm not mistaken. But it does not include this project site as a site that needs to be rezoned. Now, it's not saying that the city can't rezone it, but it's just not accounted for as being needed to contribute to those RENA numbers.
Question, if I remember correctly, in regards to the RENA, were we a little higher on the high-end allocations? And we were a little more behind on allocations for mid-to-lower-income housing?
I don't have those, like, the specific breakdown, but my recollection and feel free, maybe, and Dave to weigh in. My understanding is we were accounting for the higher end or providing, but not so much the lower end.
Yeah, so generally speaking, because I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, we were meeting the needs for the average, medium income and the high and high income levels. And we needed to focus on the low-income levels.
And when you say low-income levels, is it lower than the current median income? Or are we talking lower, low income?
Yeah, so are you asking about the the RENA figures for the next eight years that were a part of the housing element that you just adopted? So, and I'm going to, these are pretty close. They're they're approximate, though. So Jonathan mentioned for the next eight years, the state identified that we need to provide land to develop approximately three-thousand-and-sixty-nine housing units for that next eight-year period, of which approximately, I think about fourteen-hundred of those, or a little less than half, were for, intended to be feasible for development of low or very low-income housing. Now, we don't get involved at the at the housing element and RENA levels of mandating that if you build a unit, it has to be reserved for for low or very low income. The way through the housing element it's looked at is density. And typically, density is up at the thirty-two-plus range are viewed as the kinds of densities that can support lower, housing for lower-income households. It doesn't mean that if this project is built or approved and built, that the applicant would rent it at a really, a very low rental rate. But because you're reaching that density level, you know, as Mr. Rule indicated, more than half of the units are one-bedroom or studios. And typically, the one-bedroom and studio units are, well, not typically, you know, in relative terms, they are the least expensive. You know, it's harder to find one-one-bedroom and studio-type housing. And so those are almost always going to be the lowest cost, you know, at least certainly within any given project, those will be the lowest cost. And so by reaching towards those higher densities, up thirty-two units per acre, in order to fit it on this site, to meet the parking, all that, you really are getting those smaller units, which tend to be more affordable. So.
That's an excellent explanation. Thank you.
Anyone else from the commission?
Well, yes, I have a follow-up question to that because with David saying that typically the higher densities bring in bring in more affordability, the studio prices, because these are going to be, this is going to be a third luxury apartment complex. So the studios are going to start at more moderate to high prices, correct?
Yeah, I would I would look to Mr. Rule to answer, if he's able to at this point, what the what the rates would be. They would certainly, I would imagine, be the, with, relative to two-bedrooms or three-bedrooms, lower. But I don't know if you.
So yes, to answer your question, I mean, studios and one-bedrooms, what Dave said is is very accurate. They are, they always go very quickly because they are the lowest price. But relatively, they are still moderate, you know, median to high-level income. But one thing I would add to that is Verdant is actually no longer fully market rate. They were purchased by a company that converts market-rate housing to rent-restricted units. And they do throw, they do so through state-funded programs. And so new housing stock like this, especially at the densities that we were just discussing, allow for more opportunities like that. So we also had another project that Spanos built in the early two thousands off of Texas Street. It's like around two-hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty units that was also recently converted, about a year and a half ago, to fully affordable. So the more housing stock that comes online that kind of fits that mold, the more opportunities it creates for, there's a lot of state programs out there right now that folks are taking advantage of. We haven't yet, but that's that's sort of, you know, the kind of supply and demand aspect of of adding more density.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the commission? Seeing none, I see that we also have a couple of speaker cards. I'm going to call those to the podium. The first one is from Nora Dizon. If Nora would come, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I want to really thank the staff for considering the general plan and arriving at your decision because this is something that we, the community, have been very, very concerned about. Going to the information on the school, Nell de Mundy is the one school in the area. As of the, excuse me, the school year that just ended, there were six vacancies, but we expect it'll be zero for the next school year. And there were already students that were diverted to other schools. There really is no school capacity to handle more residents. We really do need the Green Valley corporate area to be a center for employment. They're just, the infrastructure to support new residents just does not exist. And I really do hope that you will wait. City council is considering all the factors that are needed to arrive at a plan that is good for the city. And again, thank you very much to the planning staff. It's very rare that they'll reject or suggest that a project be rejected. But we really, the residents have to put up with these decisions. We'd really appreciate it if you will wait till the general plan has been decided. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nora. My next speaker is Brenda Nikakaki. Am I seeing that right? I'm sorry, Brenda Nicolai, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Brenda Nicolai. I am the president of the Edgewater Development at Green Valley Lake, which is about half a mile away. And I wanted to make a comment in regards to the slide deck that indicated that specific area has a low fire risk. Homeowners within a few miles of this proposed area have indicated they're losing their home insurance due to wildfire danger. In fact, this was written in the Daily Republic several years back as a warning, and it is now coming into fruition. My own HOA saw considerable increase in our annual home insurance as the HOA covers the buildings of the development, which is about one-hundred-and-ten homes. How will GV3 offset those high-fire insurance rates without passing them on to the residents? And by the way, where will these residents go if a fire actually comes tearing down the hills into our area at lightning speed? We saw this on the other end of Fairfield as it came down in Lagoon Valley. It was seconds, it was minutes. And when you have all those individuals and their cars sitting in a two-story parking garage, you're going to create a bottleneck. Mr. Matthews indicated, how can we get the lights timed? I'm sorry, that's not going to happen. I ride my bike to the Costco. I ride my bike to the Safeway because it's faster than for me to get in the car. We live a mile away. How is that possible? I hope you will once again oppose the Green Valley Three Apartments and oppose the RVH rezone. This was always meant to be a business corporate park. Let's keep it that way. And by the way, we do need companies that will pay. And unfortunately, the city of Fairfield doesn't have that. And there was a great slide there that indicated, these are the companies that have a job availability. I'm sorry, I applied many of those, and I'm highly educated, and they don't pay me enough to pay my mortgage. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Do we have any Zoom callers?
I do see one hand raised. If our our technical support could please pass that caller through.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Flynn. I'm from the law firm Lozow Jury, speaking on behalf of the Laborers International Union of North America, Local Three Twenty-Four, or Launa. Launa is agreeing with the staff recommendation and urges the commission to deny the development review and recommend the city council deny the general plan and zone changes for the reasons in the staff report and Mr. Atkinson's presentation. It really, it sounds incredibly beneficial to have a comprehensive plan rather than engaging with one-offs, as the commissioners have mentioned. But if the commission does decide to go forward and go against staff's recommendation, Launa would request that the commission still deny the project because the environmental impact report that was prepared was inadequate under CEQA. Launa submitted a written comment earlier this week detailing the shortcomings of the EIR. And that comment included reports prepared by experts in air quality, greenhouse gases, indoor air quality, and biological resources. And they found that the EIR failed to identify and mitigate numerous impacts of this project. We also noted in that comment, the EIR didn't discuss renewable energy features, such as rooftop solar that could be incorporated. From the applicant's presentation, it seems like that actually might be incorporated into the project. And there's going to be rooftop top solar, and there's going to be EV spaces, you know, and and that should have been included and discussed in the EIR as well. So if the commission does decide to move forward with the project, Launa is requesting that the EIR be revised and circulated to address those issues prior to any further approval of the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Brian.
I do see that we have other hands raised, so if we could continue bringing the callers forward via Zoom.
Hi, my name is Suk, and I'm a resident of Green Valley. And I support taking alternative one-of-no project or no development to avoid the impacts. It seems like something will be need to be developed. And I think it's really important to ask the residents what they need. And they will tell you things like grocery stores, healthcare centers, and recreational area centers for for folks who already live here. So residents are genuinely concerned about their role in the political process, their quality of life, and the environment. They're concerned about allowing rezoning and the fact that the general plan has not been finalized, and this has been named many times. This, wait, this tells us that residents, this tells that our input doesn't matter, and certain entities would have power to shift governance processes. So residents are speaking from insight and wisdom of our lived experience and know that we will carry the impacts for years. As shown in the slides, the EIR will have adverse effects on the habitat, wetlands, and tree preservation. And what happens when some of these assets are removed? I also don't have faith in the traffic study as a resident. We have to wait through multiple cycles of lights at that intersection. And the memo indicated that the existing peak-hour volume does not account for plan development, which we know there is a lot of. So I understand there's pressure and need to develop and build housing, but we must do so responsibly with attention to infrastructure and a process that's fair with resident input. Nell de Mundy has a higher teacher versus student ratio than the state, and any more students will be a burden. We have a serious housing affordability crisis, and a luxury development will not solve this. So for someone to be able to live in this area in a one-bedroom, they may need a pre-tax income of ninety-two thousand to not be rent-burdened, and I understand. And looking at, indeed, Jelly Belly does not pay that much. So there are some considerations to take into account, especially looking at some of the data that was presented by the developers. Thank you for allowing us to present.
Thank you so much.
And I believe we may have one or two more online.
Hi there. My name is Amy Tran. And I came before and spoke about this issue, about something similar. I live in the Green Valley area, and I'm also Suk's neighbor. We just don't support more housing, specifically like apartments. Like, I feel like we totally just have enough, and it is quite expensive. I have coworkers that says that they've been looking in my area for housing, and they can't even afford it. It is just, I'm just going to keep it simple. It's just traffic congestion. I'm worried about health hazards. You know, we have tons of little children around this area. I have a toddler myself. And it's just, we don't know who's going to be moving in this area, whether they're predators or just, you know, more mobs that could contribute to other health issues like asthma. So I just don't support more housing, more new apartments. And thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you, Amy.
And that was our last caller.
Are there any issues raised by the, by the commenters that need to be addressed? Before I do that, let me first of all close the public comment section. So are there any questions that were raised by the commenters that need to be addressed?
Yes, so I want to acknowledge that staff is, before you recommending denial of the project, but I did want to just state just a few responses to issues that members of the public made that staff does not, does not agree with. So one note is, we heard comments on school impacts and capacity. So state law requires that a developer pay impact fees. And the impact fee goes to the school district to provide that capacity. So that by itself is a mitigation to introducing more schoolchildren to an area and having potential impacts on, on a school. I heard comments regarding wildfire and evacuation. So the EIR did analyze wildfire risk and found that there were no significant impacts, and therefore no mitigation measures were needed. Additionally, there were comments on fire access and emergency evacuation. So our fire department, as part of the internal review, did look at the site plan. You have a fire access plan before you. There's two points of ingress and egress, or entering and exiting. And our fire department determined that the site was adequate in terms of fire access and circulation as well as evacuation. I've also heard comments from, I believe, the attorney representing Launa. As mentioned in my, my presentation, staff received a letter citing a collection of concerns on the EIR. Staff does not agree that those are concerns. But I would say it's a moot point because in recommending denial, the project would be statutorily exempt. Should the Planning Commission wish to recommend certification of that EIR and approval of the project to the council, staff would be providing detailed response to public comment on the, the letter regarding the CEQA of the project. I also noted that there were, there was a note that there was support for no development alternative. I wanted to clarify that as part of the EIR, there are alternatives that are required to be analyzed. So there's a no-project alternative, which for obvious reasons would not have any impacts because it's just undeveloped land. There's also impacts, or alternatives that evaluate reduced residential projects. So a residential project at a lower density as well as an alternative that considered what impact would result from an office development or development that is consistent with the zoning. And the EIR determined that the impacts were for the project and the lower residential alternative as well as the office alternative were comparable. In some instances, the, an office use would generate higher traffic counts per the analysis. And the last thing I'll say, I heard some comments regarding what can be characterized as generalizations on like rental units and potential health and, and safety concerns. And staff does not agree that those are issues. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
And I would like to let the commission know that we have a late Zoom caller. So if you wish, you could reopen the public hearing to allow that person to speak.
I'm going to reopen the public comment section so that we can hear from our last speaker.
And if you could please pass the speaker forward, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Monica Silva. I'm a resident owner of one of the homes in the Sienna neighborhood. And I just wanted to add in that after reading the environmental impact report, it did state that the site would be on land that was very unstable and that loss of life from property would be significantly high risk. So just for that reason alone, and with it also being on a fault line, I think that building such a large-scale building with all those inhabitants and all that on such soft ground that's unstable would not be a great idea. So just wanted to add that in there, that after reviewing the environmental impact report, that, that should also be considered when denying the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
So staff would not recommend denial of the project based on the environmental analysis. So one of the topics discussed in the EIR was geology and soils. There were potentially significant impacts that were identified, but none of the impacts that were identified are considered significant and unavoidable. That means that should, should the project move forward, there are different measures or mitigation measures or improvements that would be made to lessen that impact to an insignificant level.
Thank you for that clarification, Jonathan. So now I'm going to, once again, close the public comment section. Seeing none, I'm going to ask for the resolution.
Actually, I'd like, I'd like to go over a couple of my thoughts about this. I think the, the biggest issue that I've heard, both from staff and from the public and from prior meetings, is the issue of one-off. And look, I spend every day working on plans, so I fully appreciate the need for comprehensive plan. But also, the nature of real estate development is one-off. And given the need that we have for housing, albeit there are still concerns about lower-cost housing, and also the desire that I hear constantly from people in this neighborhood wanting more retail, wanting more support services, that only comes with more rooftops. And this is not going to move the needle all that much, but it does move the needle somewhat. And so those are some of the factors that I'm thinking about as we evaluate this project.
Thank you for that input, anyone else?
Yes, I just wanted to add that this is a really excruciating decision for me. When I went to visit the project that's, that's completed, I believe it was Nova, the question that I asked is, what about even our seniors? And there are some seniors taking advantage of the property as it has, you know, multiple, different types of amenities that it offers. And so I really like that and the aspect of Verdant being able to offer some lower-cost units. And I understand that there is a need. However, I also know that there are a number of projects coming down the pike that are going to address housing for those who work on Travis Air Force Base and in other industry here. And in regards to one of the comments from the Economic Development Corporation President, it says that if we are to attract the kind of high-value employers, I'm concerned that we are looking to attract more high-value employers while maybe our current residents who are looking for housing here will not be able to afford the area because we're oversaturating that particular market with luxury apartments. It's just a thought, because I know that some of, I mean, some of the apartments there, you would, three times the rent would be close to like $9,000 a month. And, you know, some of the, the places that I know that are out here, there are some jobs here that will support that type of, support that type of rental arrangement for some, but it is for those who are more at the top, not the middle, the middle employee, if that makes sense. So it's a very difficult decision, but I also have to consider that I would like to see a cohesive plan. And with the Green Valley, Cordelia area always being, it's, it's been a hot topic for years now. We're on the cusp of the general plan. I do really support a cohesive plan. But I would just like to say to anyone, bear, or everyone, bear in mind that anything that we do there is going to bring more traffic, is going to bring more residents. That's inevitable, be it an office building or duplexes. You know, some things are just inevitable. You can develop commercial real estate there that everyone's been asking for, and there's going to be more traffic. There's, there's, there, those issues come with growth. So those are, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Evans. This is a challenging one because, on one hand, we do know that in this area, we need housing. I'm just not sure that a luxury apartment complex is the right avenue right now. And considering that we are, in a sense, close, but it could be far out, it could be this year or 2024, before we finalize the general plan. But I think sometimes it's really important as a city that we have comprehensive plans instead of just something here, something there, and not looking at the big picture. I think that's very important. And I do agree that, you know, there is a possibility that there's going to be some type of housing there. And so that will probably increase traffic, and we need to address the schools. But I really think that comprehensive plan is a necessity. I also want, and I'm not sure if it was on a call or if it was something I read about the equation between the apartments and crime, I, I don't know. But I just want to say, I, I'm unaware of any statistics that say if you have an apartment complex in the area that there's going to be an increased crime. So that sounds a little biased against renters. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Don?
I'm sorry, Drew. This, this is not what I signed up for, folks. This is a real push-pull. I think the project's a great project. I, I have frustrations, I have concerns. I feel that everything that Chris Matthews said here just a minute ago is true. On one side, the, the public is asking us to provide more services for the community. You can't get those unless you have enough people there to generate that opportunity. I understand, I happen to, I'm one of few, but I, I happen to find that going to Costco at, at Green Valley is easier for me than running over to Vacaville. And the traffic is, sucks. It's, it's not, it's not very good. I've expressed to Jonathan, and I've talked to the fire marshal, I don't think we have a safe ingress and egress off of that property in, in case of an emergency. But what else are you going to do there? Nick had a great point. What, what are you going to put in there other than this? I would like to see city council step up and get this project moved, not this project, get the decisions made so that we can move forward. We shouldn't be dilly-dallying around for another two years trying to figure out what our project, you know, what our plan is going to be going forward. And yet, they have a lot of, a lot of questions to answer and, and decisions to make. I haven't come up with an answer. Those are the, those are the issues that I'm trying to weigh in my mind at this very moment. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I just have one quick question. Am I allowed to ask a question and discussion? I know that there is a resident that had sent in a letter some time ago, and he had thoughtfully compared the number of housing to the number of stores in another city that was comparable to the size of Fairfield. And we were supposed to follow up, I think, and find out like how many more rooftops essentially it would take for us to be able to bring in more commercial development in that area. Is there any update on that?
Yeah, our, our Economic Development Division manager, Dwayne Dollman, actually presented very similar information to what you're requesting to our city council. We could definitely bring him in to present that to Planning Commission as well. I, I recall the letter that you're speaking of not being the subject matter expert, that that would be Dwayne. I will give a broad statement of, as I understand it, different businesses have very specific criteria in order to come to a city. So they're looking at demographics in terms of our age. They're looking at how many college degrees we have, and then location, location, location. That's always going to be the number one thing. So although there may be another jurisdiction of a similar size as us, we may not share the same demographics as them. But would be happy to bring in our ED manager for that.
And you speak of location, and I'm wondering if there are other issues with bringing commercial businesses to that area besides just rooftops, such as like freeway access or anything like that?
Yes, I, I do believe there's, there's a handful of factors, right? How you get on and off the freeway. I think in previous meetings, we've discussed, you know, there, there will be improvements to this particular area of the city regarding on and off ramps. So just as an example, we currently have an application in for a new Starbucks drive-through, and one of their main things is the proximity to the freeway and how you can access their site quickly and then immediately exit and pop back on to the freeway. So depending on the business, they've had, they've got various factors that they're looking at. Yeah. And if there isn't any questions, before I pass it to the chairperson to request a motion, I do just want to remind the commission tonight that a motion approving the resolution before you would deny the development of the project and recommend denial to the city council for the general plan amendment and zone change. It's a little tricky, approving the resolution actually denies the project. And if you feel otherwise, we would be looking for a motion that directs staff to return to the Planning Commission at a future date with a revised resolution to approve the project and include all the approval materials that would be necessary, such as conditions of approval for development. And with that, I'll, I'll pass it to Chairperson Childs.
I do have one, just one quick comment that I, I didn't state when I was speaking earlier to thank the public for the folks on Zoom as well as in-person for coming out, regardless of what your opinion is. I think it's very important to state, you know, your objection or approval. So it's really refreshing to see so many participants. Thank you.
So I'm going to make the motion now, once again, approving it means that we're denying it. If that makes sense. So do I have a motion to approve Resolution PC 2023-07? Do I have an alternative motion?
Well, from my perspective, I think this body should provide feedback to the city council as to the unique qualities of this development. And again, general plan, fully support that. But this is a unique, landlocked piece of property that's ready to be developed now, that will prove, give the city many benefits, including additional money for schools, including additional road improvements, et cetera, et cetera. So it's my opinion, this- this commission should go to the city council saying, from our perspective, we support this. However, we defer to the city council as it relates to whether they want, obviously, to approve the, the zoning and/or defer till the general plan is fully developed.
So if, if the commission wishes to support, um, the project, then it would have to come back to the commission with a revised resolution with the appropriate findings. And then, that would then go on to the city council with your recommendations. So you have two choices essentially, either approve or deny, you know, a recommendation to approve or deny the resolution with the appropriate direction.
A question and point of order. Do we need to vote on this resolution to ask staff to come back and reconsider with a revised resolution?
You don't need to vote on the resolution. You, you can either make a recommendation to approve the resolution and take that vote, or if it's a, the opposite, then you're not voting on the resolution. You're directing staff to come back at a future date with a revised resolution. And then you would take that resolution at a, at that next meeting.
And I'll add, um, if I'm hearing you correctly, it sounded like you support the project, but you're not, you would like council to make the determination for the zone change and the general plan amendment. Is that accurate?
Well, council is the only body that can. So yes, that is correct. But I do think it makes a difference, albeit with NOVA, we voted it down, city council approved it. So, you know, full acknowledgement of that. But, um, uh, it's my opinion that this is a quality project that the city should carefully evaluate and that that should be taken to city council with, you know, if there is support. I mean, personally, I support it, but I'm only one of seven. So, um, that's my position.
Sure. So not to put words in your mouth, but I, I do believe I'm hearing an alternative motion for staff to return with a resolution to support.
Well, that, that was my question of point of order. Is that a motion, or is that, so it's a motion, not a resolution?
Correct. It's a motion, not on the resolution, but a motion to direct staff.
Okay. Well, I,
So we need to, if, if you'd like to, you can make the motion, and then it would require a second and a vote.
And just to make sure that we're clear, you would be moving to, um, support the project, but defer to council on, um, rezoning and, uh, what was the other part? Sorry, the general plan amendment. Okay, and the general plan amendment. Okay.
The council, um, is the only body that can make that decision. So effectively, yes, to your question.
Don't we have to deny this first, though? Or approve, whatever we're going to do?
You need to either approve or deny the development of the project, and then you need to either recommend approval or denial of the general plan amendment and zone change for council to make the determination on.
But to do that, we need a revised resolution in a future meeting by staff.
If you wanted to approve the project and allow council to make the, the other determinations on the zoning, then you would be directing staff to return with a resolution of approval. Correct.
And during that time, it may be possible that the city council takes up the issue prior to it coming back to us with, um, staff, right?
So it wouldn't move forward to council, um, until we came back to this body. So you guys have to make your action first.
And, and let me weigh in just because I, I want to make sure everything's clear here. So I think you have a, there's a couple of paths. If you agree with the staff recommendation, then you can make a motion to approve the resolution in front of you. If however, you desire to see this approved, you know, for the planning commission to, to approve the design and make a recommendation to the city council that they, uh, change the general plan and zoning, what you would do is you would make a motion to direct staff to return with a revised resolution with conditions of approval. So essentially, I think those are your two paths. So if you, if you are supportive of the project, you would make a motion, uh, it would require a second and a, and a supportive vote from at least a majority of you. Uh, the motion would be to direct staff to return with a resolution approving the project and making recommendations to the city council to approve the general plan and zoning.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to come back with a revised resolution, um, supporting the project with the view to, uh, move that forward to city council.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those that are in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Just to confirm, that is, uh, it looks like three ayes and commissioner.
And mine is a nay also.
So motion fails.
So if it's three, three is what I'm hearing, then the motion fails. So the commission can entertain an alternative motion, if anyone would like to make one.
I make a motion to approve, um, resolution number PC 2023-07.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Yay.
Yes? All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Well, I was a second, so, yes.
So, um, the motion fails. Um, the commission can choose to continue the discussion. Um, we'd like to take a brief recess so we can look into the options.
Thank you.
Sure. So, we had a chance to consider the issue of the stalemate. And so, the options are, because the City Council is the ultimate decision-maker, it can move forward directly to council with no recommendation from the Planning Commission. Alternatively, the Planning Commission can continue the discussion and attempt to reach a majority vote. So, those are the two options.
So, how would the Planning Commissioners like to move forward?
May I just make a quick editorial statement of the obvious? There's a reason why we have seven commissioners. And it's unfortunate that tonight, we don't. But unless there's any movement, I think we're at an impasse right now. The only other question I guess I would ask staff and council is, can we defer it to next meeting and re-address it at that point when we have seven?
Unless there's some other reason why we can't do that, then we could continue it to a date certain with the hope that we would have that seventh commissioner. That is also an option.
I'm in favor of sending this to City Council. And that is on the agenda for tonight, and unfortunately, it was not seven of us. So, I'm okay with moving it forward to City Council with no recommendation from the Planning Commission. I don't know if that makes a motion.
I would do a motion, just to be clear.
Oh, you're looking for a motion. Thank you. I make a motion that we send this to City Council without the recommendation from the Planning Commission, since it was a split vote. Or, I don't know if that's the exact phrase.
Would it be all right to amend the motion to say it was at a 3-3 vote? So that the City Council has some context there?
It'll be in the staff report.
Would that not be in the minutes?
No, we'll make sure to include it.
Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion passes.
And I apologize. We're going to take another quick five-minute recession. Sorry. You know what I'm trying to say. Five-minute pause.
Thank you.
A few breaks here. Thank you.
In Fairfield, our staff person is Tendi Tunga.
I did, I am Tunga.
Okay.
Tendi, I am Tunga.
I'm sorry. My apologies.
No, nothing wrong with that. Before you this evening, I think it's almost night. It's a proposal for annexing six properties that are within the city limits that would help moving forward the other project that was submitted to council between 2020 and 2021. The resolution was sent to LAFCO, which is a local agents' formation commission. I'm sure you have heard that acronym so many times, LAFCO, LAFCO. They are the agents empowered by the State of California to facilitate expansion or growth of cities, taking property from the county, incorporating it into the city. As I was just saying, the local agents' formation commission is the agents empowered, actually throughout California and throughout the rest of America, to bring properties that are outside the city's jurisdiction, as long as they are within the sphere of influence of a city, they qualify to be annexed. And it is LAFCO's policy that any annexation that's proposed, it cannot be partially annexed. The properties have to be annexed in whole, in their totality. As I said earlier, there are six properties being annexed. The aerial photo before you is showing the Warner Avenue property and the Hamilton Avenue, I'm sorry, Hamilton Drive properties. Warner Avenue has two properties. Hamilton has three properties, which makes them five, and giving us a total of 1.4 acres. Since we said there are six, the other isolated property is on Lopes Road, which is 0.24 of an acre. And that property has a house in front and an industrial building at the back. The rest of the properties that are on Warner and Hamilton, they all have existing residential. So, on this annexation, there is no development being proposed. It's only bringing these parcels into the city so as to avoid creating of an island. As I said it earlier briefly, in 2021 and 2022, City Council, under separate public hearing, they adopted three resolutions to facilitate the annexation of a property owned by Blessed Baptist Church, and the property owned by Meadow Creek LLC, and the property owned by Redtail Multi-Family Development. LAFCO has a strong policy of trying to eliminate islands. So, by annexing, the city has to determine that the properties that are being annexed will all not leave another property isolated. So, as I said, LAFCO's policy is to encourage orderly development for the city, and also the city will benefit in the sense that it will provide public services in an orderly manner when properties are annexed properly, instead of leaving others isolated in the properties in the county and few properties in the city. So, as long as they are all together, it's always wise to merge them all together. So, when the previous applications were submitted to LAFCO, after all these considerations, it was then determined that those properties that went to LAFCO first will continue, be reviewed by LAFCO under Fairfield Phase One Bundle Annexation. And the one we are considering tonight will fall under Fairfield Phase Two Bundle Annexation, which involves six properties. This is the existing general designation from the city, for the city. The Hamilton and Warner Drive properties are zoned multifamily residential, and the Lopes property is a designation of zoning IL, which stands for limited industrial. That's the property that has a warehouse in the back and a residential in front. And if this annexation goes through, the house would remain as legal non-conforming, while the industrial portion of it will remain as legal conforming use. This is the pre-zoning designation provided by the city, which also matches what the county has in terms of its zoning. They are all residential, so there is no conflict between what the zoning for the county is today and what the pre-zoning for the city is. This is the pre-zoning for the Lopes Road, which shows industrial under that star. And this is the outline of the properties that are being annexed. They all have a total of 1.64 acres. And they are all undeveloped, as I said. They all have existing homes, rather. There is no future development being proposed, you know, as part of this annexation. In order for property to be annexed, as I said earlier, the properties have to be consistent with the municipal services review, and there should be possibility of having city services available within the properties so that they can be annexed. These properties are all consistent with the zoning code, and our city zoning code requires a maximum load size of 6,000 square feet. This annexation, being not a project, and there is no development being proposed, it qualifies for categorical exemption under CEQA Guidelines, Section 15319, Part A, which governs the annexation of existing facilities and laws for exempt facilities. And to prove that this is not a project with a development associated with it, Section 15061 BN3 qualifies that CEQA only applies to projects with the potential environmental impacts. So, since this is just a formality of bringing the properties into the city, there is no development, so there is no environmental impact associated with this proposal. Tonight, staff is asking that you adopt Resolution Number 2023-08, recommending City Council approval to annex the property and submit a request to LAFCO, so that LAFCO can process and review the application for annexation. That concludes my presentation. If you have any other questions, staff will be glad to respond and provide you answers.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Now, do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
I was just curious as to how the annexation will affect the two houses, and if we've heard from the residents there at all. And by two houses, I'm referring to the ones that looks like are on Warner. If I'm understanding correctly, it looks like there's two houses and a warehouse. And yes, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, there is no... Actually, sometime in March of this year, we sent a lot of invites to all the property owners who belong to those six houses. And we only had one person who attended the meeting. And this evening, we had about three people who were here. I guess they were tired of waiting, so we addressed their questions while standing outside. Their main concern was to find out if there's going to be any new laws imposed on them, or any changes to ownership of the properties, whether their properties will be affected. We already told them, the only thing that's happening is whenever they have a 911 calls, instead of calling the sheriff, they are now calling the city. Whenever there are votes or elections taking place in the city, they are no longer voting in the county, they are now voting for the city. And they will have privilege of connecting to city services, which they don't have at the moment. And the good thing, the city was generous enough not to compel them to have a deadline of when they can connect to city services. And above all, they are not paying for this, for annexation to LAFCO. The Meadow Group was, you know, kind enough to provide for the payment, so that we can expedite the annexation process, instead of asking people to contribute some money. So, we appreciate that we are working with an outstanding developer who is kind enough to consider the community.
And just to expand on that, Tendi gave a very detailed answer. I'll give the very short summary, I suppose, for any of the residents that would be annexed. Nothing will change for them in terms of their day-to-day. But as Tendi mentioned, they'll receive city services, they'll have the ability to vote in city elections. And for the one property on Lopes Road, that is a single-family home in what would be an industrial zone, they'll remain as a single-family home under our legal non-conforming status. They'll essentially be grandfathered in, and it can remain that way until they choose to redevelop, if they choose to redevelop. But for the most part, their day-to-day will be the same, and when they would like to receive city water and sewer, they have that ability to connect.
If I may also add to that, the families that are outside, we also emphasize to them that when the annexation is going through, it still has a long process, because Planning Commission's task is to recommend that it moves forward to LAFCO via council, so council will make the ultimate decision. Whenever they are ready to expand their homes, put a patio, and other improvements, they now come to the city versus going to the county.
Any other commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion. Are you ready? Oh, public hearing.
Okay. Okay. I need to hear from the public hearing. I'm going to actually open the public hearing.
I live on Bridgeport in Old Cordelia, so I'm county. I'm not part of Fairfield. But, and I understand that development and progress is inevitable, but what has happened to my residents, my community, is we've been inundated with traffic. I actually purchased a device to measure traffic in ongoing negotiations with the county to put speed bumps on our road, because we have over 1,000 cars in the morning and 1,000 cars in the evening. And I've noticed a serious increase in 18-wheelers down my residential street. Also, flooding is a big issue. He's mentioned that these undeveloped lands, before all the stuff was built out in Old Cordelia, water would sit in the fields and would soak in. Now, it all comes down my street, and I happen to be, myself and Greg Gines, my neighbor, are the lowest point. I actually had a foot of water in my driveway this last spring, and it's happened numerously over the last couple of years. So, all I'm asking is that you consider, every time you have these developments, just like the last proposal, where does the water go? It's not just traffic, there are other things to consider, too. Traffic is horrible. Things are going to change when they ever do finish the 680 interchange. It's going to happen. But water is a big deal. We're very low. At high tide, there's no place for the water to go. All these developments keep dumping into the same creeks, so more and more water. It's actually gotten to the point, this last spring, it was about a foot below the trestle. What's going to happen when those things get washed out? So, please, just make all considerations when you're addressing all of these improvements. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Glenn. And now, we'll hear from Nora Dezon.
Good evening again. I didn't expect to speak on this, but then I spoke to the three people who were here, like you said, and they had no idea what was going on. They just said, "We received this, and we're here to find out what's happening." And I'm going, "Well, you know what?" They were not ready to say anything. I just want you to know that they did not know what was going on. And the only reason somebody would want to annex their property to the city is possibly to purchase it and develop it, which is cool if they make money and that works for them. But housing is expensive, and having a home that you bought long ago that doesn't cost too much is pretty important. I'm just trying to say, please, before you make a decision, make sure that the people who are affected actually understand what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
Hello, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Hello. Carrie Watt, representing Meadow Creek Group, the applicant for the bundle annexation, too. A little bit of history, Tendi did a great job, as did Meili, but several years ago, three different projects came through, both Planning Commission and City Council. The Pittman Road annexation at 475535 Pittman Road, Blessed Baptist Church, and then the Redtail or Sunset Avenue Apartments. All three were approved by Planning Commission and City Council, and they were approved for annexation. When we went to apply to the annexation to LAFCO, LAFCO said, "There are other properties within the city which LAFCO considers as island annexations, and it's LAFCO's policy to really encourage cities to go ahead and take those islands, which are surrounded by the rest of the city, that have sewer and water and other services immediately adjacent to them, and go ahead and annex them into the city." So, LAFCO asked the city, and Meadow Creek Group decided to go ahead and help to get these additional six properties annexed into the city. As Meili and Tendi both indicated, nothing changes for those property owners. They can continue doing, living in their homes, et cetera, et cetera. The benefit of them to annex into the city is when they want, they can access city services like water and sewer, which are in the streets right out in front of them. The city is being generous, as Tendi said, in not requiring them to hook up to water and sewer now, but when they can, or they desire to, they may. So, Meadow Creek Group is paying for the detachment from the fire districts, so they then become involved in the city, and when they call for 911, the city fire department comes to them, and we're paying all the other fees to go ahead and move all of these annexations forward, as LAFCO has requested, and help the city with its application. If you have any questions, I'm right here. So, thank you.
And we have one caller online. If you could please pass the caller forward.
Good evening. My name is Zachary Dark. I have a couple of hopefully quick questions. First, multiple people have said that there will be no changes to the residents. Does that mean that there is no increased tax rate for property, or any other tax that would normally be handled through the county? And secondly, what interest does Meadow Creek Group have in either Phase One or any other phase, as I note that none of the six properties in the annexation for Phase Two are owned by Meadow Creek or any member of the Sanson family? Thank you.
I would love to answer some of the comments or questions, and of course, I'll pass it to Tendi as well. For the one comment regarding the property owners or the residents of the properties, it's our very intention to make sure that they understand what is happening. We did provide an initial notice of your property is under question for annexation, so they received an initial notice. And then, we also sent a notice inviting them to a community meeting that we held at the Fairfield Library here. We had quite the breakfast spread, I'm proud to say, but unfortunately, we only had one person attend. And then, of course, they were notified of the meeting tonight. So, we have reached out to the property owners on three occasions, but we have not received very many comments or contact from those property owners. I'm glad we had a few come out tonight, so that we could provide them that clarification. And then, regarding the recent questions, the properties would be subject to the city's property tax, so that could be a change. I apologize, I don't know the... I apologize, I don't know the monetary values of that. But once the properties are within the city of Fairfield, they'll be subject to city of Fairfield regulations and taxes. And then what interest does Meadow Creek have? Meadow Creek, as Carrie had mentioned earlier, they have parcels under Phase One of the bundle annexation. So there are two properties off of Pittman Road that they, I believe, own, and have received Planning Commission and City Council approval for annexation. At this time, there is currently no development proposed. But really, they, they're interested in the Phase One of this project. They were kind to coordinate with the city and LAFCO to help bring on Phase Two in order to meet LAFCO's policies to eliminate all islands within the city.
Any other questions from commissioners or staff?
I assume that these property owners were informed what the cost would be for them to hook up for water and sewer, or not?
They were not informed of the costs. They were just informed that they do not have to connect until they desire to. So there's no costs for them at this time, but should they want to, those costs will be their obligation.
I'm gonna now close the public hearing section. Any commissioner deliberation?
I have a couple of questions regarding, when you said they're not obligated, the residents are not, or the owners are not obligated to hook up to water and sewer, which is this time, is that, is there a time limit on that?
There is not. The, if you review your conditions tied to this annexation and the pre-annexation agreement that were part of the staff packet, there is no timeframe, it's simply when they desire to. So these properties, if they're not receiving water and sewer, they're most likely on a septic tank and potentially a well. So I would think that in some future, should any of those systems fail, they would be interested in obtaining the city services.
Thank you. Well, another question, I mean, I know that we're, we, meaning you, the staff, are obligated to send notice, and you did the community outreach. And I know it's only six residents, so it's small, but it is, I don't know if alarming is the right word, but when there's only one person that shows up, and we don't know if it's schedule conflict, a language barrier, accessibility of why they couldn't attend, and then they don't have this information. And granted, there was, I think you said, two or three, three that came out. So it is concerning that we're making decisions and the residents aren't aware of what's happening.
Yeah, I share that sentiment. What I, just a minor clarification, there are six parcels, but I believe there's three single-family homes, is that correct, Tendai? Six parcels and three?
Most of them are all homes, there are six. It's only one, I'm sorry.
Yes, there are six parcels. Only one has a combination of industrial and residence. The rest of the, there is no undeveloped property. All of them are developed with the existing single-family homes.
But back to your point, yes, we did our various contacts, but we can only get the turnout that we can get.
In addition to that, our Public Works Department is always open for anybody who wants to find out how soon they could connect, if they have money and resources to do that. They will be, you know, assisted and facilitated in the procedure. Actually, they've got a layout procedure on how to do it. So it's a matter of coming and getting the information they need, and plan when, whether they wanna do it in 16 months or 18 months, that's up to them. But it's in their best interest that in the end, instead of using septic tanks, they are better off on a sewer system.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Is there a Phase Three for Meadowview, or is this it?
This is it, it's only Phase One and Phase Two.
So after Phase One and Phase Two are complete, that will eliminate all the privately-owned island parcels within the city of Fairfield. There will be four remaining island parcels, but those parcels are owned by other jurisdictions. So there wasn't a strong desire to annex those into the city of Fairfield.
Any other commissioners? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution PC 2023-08?
So moved.
All in favor? I'm sorry, do I have a second?
I second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. And now our next agenda item is the Valley Appointment of a Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Member, and our presenter is Meili Sheen.
Hi, everyone, last item for the evening, I promise. If you don't mind, I'm just gonna present from here. I don't have a PowerPoint for you all, as it's a fairly simple appointment. At the last meeting, we attempted to put this on the agenda, but it was mistitled. So bringing it before you today, the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG program, provides annual grants to cities for a broad range of activities that preserve and develop viable urban communities. We are looking to appoint a Planning Commissioner to the Advisory Board. And that, I believe, is a, it's a two-year term. They typically meet in the first quarter of the year to review grants and projects. And then you would forward on a recommendation to City Council. So with that, I'll turn back to the commission to see who might be interested in either nominating themselves or another commissioner.
Commissioners?
I would just like to say that I am a member of the CDBGP, so I won't be, I'm already a member as a public.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Warblynn is already on the Advisory Committee as a resident, so she cannot be appointed as a commissioner.
I'd also like to just say, I served on this previously. It's an excellent opportunity to be involved in some real grassroots projects and an opportunity to really get to know a number of the nonprofits that are doing amazing work within the city. So I highly encourage fellow commissioners to self-nominate.
Okay, I do sponsor my name for that advisory.
I had the pleasure of working on this committee back in 2017 to 2019, so I would share your sentiments as well. It's an excellent opportunity.
And I'm so sorry, I was taking a quick note here. Commissioner Paul, were you nominating yourself? Wonderful.
I, I think just as a matter of having a clear record, I would recommend having a vote.
Okay. We'll take a vote on that. The recommendation is to have Sashi Paul serve as the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Member from the Planning Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Aye.
I'm sorry, is there a second?
I will second that. I think we're just so focused, we keep skipping that part. I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So moved. Now we're down to the very last section, is Director's Report and Commissioners' Comments.
Yes, and unlike last time, I have very little for you. Last time, we hadn't met in a few months, so I don't have a whole lot. What I will say is we do still have a couple of projects queued. They are not scheduled for your next meeting in July. As of right now, I don't have anything tentative for that meeting. However, I would imagine maybe late July or early August, you'll be seeing the Starbucks drive-through that I had used earlier as an example. That's off of, it's on the corner of Travis and Holiday. It's taking over, I believe it was Binto Thai was there at one point. And so it would be demoing that building and building a new Starbucks. And then additionally, a handful of months ago, you reviewed the Sunset Avenue Apartments project. They are requesting to make some minor amendments to their private open space and their common open space, because that project was reviewed and approved by this body with some exceptions to the open space. It's gonna have to return to you all for another action, another decision. So those are the two projects that we currently have queued. That should be in the next handful of months. And then we also have Planning Area Six. It's an industrial planning area within the train station-specific plan. We still have a couple of moving pieces, but I would anticipate that coming also in the late summer.
And so then our last item, our Commissioner Information Items?
Mr. Chair, I apologize, there's one other item I forgot to pass on to Meili. I thought I'd, the chair is in the works. I know I've heard from many of you that you enjoy trainings and opportunities to get to know better how to do your job well. All of the planning directors in Solano County are currently working to arrange a joint training session for planning commissioners across the county. It would occur later in August, the date hasn't been officially set, so we're working to figure out a date that fits best across the county. But it would be an opportunity to meet other commissioners here in Solano County, potentially hear about issues in other cities, and at the same time, get some good, some good training on how to be a good commissioner. And I know you've had a lot of that, but every, every other opportunity helps. And like I said, it's a good opportunity to meet other commissioners and hear what's going on in some of the other jurisdictions here in the county. So more on that at one of your next meetings, so.
So then our last area is Commissioner Information Items, and I do have one item. This will be my last meeting as both your chair and also on the Planning Commission. I wrap up four years of service. I will not be coming back for a second term, but I have thoroughly enjoyed myself. And I will still be a force to be reckoned with in this county because there are a couple of other nonprofits I'll be working with. So that's my goodbye. My birthday is July 24th. Anybody else?
It's been a pleasure working with you, Commissioner Chad.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely a pleasure, thank you for your service.
We will now adjourn.